I'd like to call the Michael City Council Work Session Meeting to order.
The what is?
Calling the work session meeting to order.
Oh.
We weren't meant to be in conversation. We got a couple of things that we want to talk about, and the first one is that you got a request to advertise?
Yes, sir. Good evening, council members, mayor. The item we have for you tonight is a request to advertise as a public hearing for rezoning of 25.7 acres on Waverly Parkway and Donovan Parkway. This is on the northeast corner of that intersection. The subject property is currently zoned R1, R3, and C2, and the applicant is requesting to rezone this to a planned unit development, or a PUD, as many people call it, which is a mixed-use development, including 72 townhomes, 20 single-family homes, and a retail shop for cabinets. The single-family homes are approximately 7,500 square feet with 60-foot block widths. The townhomes meet the requirements for the townhome in our zoning ordinance. The development will also have about 6.4 acres of open space, including two ponds and some walking trails to kind of help the streets, and they've included a 25-foot wide buffer around all of the edges or perimeter of the property. The planning commissioner at its May 26 meeting voted to send a positive recommendation to the city council. I believe the final vote was seven affirmative, no deny, or no negative recommendations, and two abstaining. I'll be happy to get any questions you may have, though.
Questions? Pleasure to see the council to allow that to move on to advertising.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Quiet here, Mr. President. You can do bids. We'll do bids. The first one is asking the city council to approve a contract for vacuum, excavation, and utility daylighting services. The vacuum stays. They were, the doctor said, was on May 18. The Opelika Power Services, the vehicles mailed to nine vendors, four bids received. This is a budgeted contract, and the tabulation sheets are taxed. We recommend that the contract be awarded to associated mechanical contractors on their OBD specifications.
Questions? Yeah, I know who that is.
We let the cables run around.
And actually vacuum, actually vacuum the dirt and everything else out instead of actually digging down. Is it a burden, a burden payment of cables that are already there? So I was on my horizon, I didn't know what it was. Yeah.
Has to do with cables and running around.
That's a good thing.
The second one is also Opelika Power Services. It's a, it's a substation, U. Bushings. The bid date was on May 18. Those mailed to four vendors, three bids were received. This is a budgeted contract. The tabulation sheets are taxed, and we recommend that the contract be awarded to Stewart C. Irving Company on their lowest, on their next lowest bid, meeting specifications in the amount of $55,404. This part is specific to what we already use. It works with the other parts we have in there, and the other part that was the ELO bid will not match what we currently use. So this is the best right of time.
Any questions? Thank you. Um, thank, Mr. Jones, you had a couple of items. I think you probably got one of them.
Yeah, I already put on the agenda present tool.
Okay.
The first one was a resolution to amend the project agreement with between the city and the 280 Land Company, specifically because they were, got behind on some dates that they were supposed to make to be, be able to request certain advances on the development agreement, mostly because of the rain and the COVID, and so those dates have been adjusted, and this would be an amendment to the original project agreement. And the second one was a resolution accepting dedication of the right-of-way of Lowe's Drive, which is the road that is now a city road in front of Gander Mountain, goes off Reddick Road back to Lowe's. The, the people that financed the Lowe's company would not allow it to be, or required it to be dedicated to the citizens, that it would have ingress and egress. Is that correct? That's the right way to say it?
Well, Lowe's already had ingress on Reddick Road, but they agreed, they had a lot of reciprocal easements over this route with some developments. And it worked out everybody's best interest to make that into a public right-of-way. And in fact, there's prospective developments that may come about that would not agree to build those developments without dedicating the right-of-way by access. I have, if you look on, in front of your desk, you will see an aerial photograph. And that depicts the location of this proposed right-of-way. If you hold it up, you'll see Reddick Road at the top. And to the left, you see a big parking lot with a lot of cars in it. That's the Lowe's parking lot. If you look to the right, you'll see an empty parking lot. That's the Gander Mountain parking lot. And then that bottom, you'll see a right-of-way that runs perpendicular. That's Parker Way, which is already a dedicated public right-of-way. So this proposed right-of-way will connect Reddick Road to Parker Way, if you look at the flat ground.
Any questions? Okay. We will take two minutes and we'll start from point seven. If I may have your attention, I'd like to call the Michael City Council Meeting on June 2, 2020, to order. Call, please, Mr. Jones.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Pitts?
Here.
Mr. Smithy?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
We're honored to have the Minister Kevin Flanagan from the Edge and his colleague Pastor Hamlet Barnes from the mustard seed faith center. We're going to ask them to make their way to the podium over here, and we're going to have them lead us in the invocation. The reason that we have two ministers tonight is that we want to work to signify some unification in our community. We got a lot of things going on in our country, and we don't want that going on in Opelika. And we're going to have them pray to the good Lord that he will keep us safe and out of harm's way. I'm also going to invite Elsie Beaver and Jordan Brown with the Girl Scout Troop 7238 to make their way up here, and after we have the prayer, the invocation, we'll have these two young ladies lead us in the pledge. You all will stand.
The real reason the Alliance sent two of us is they looked at this room and said, "Let's send a little extra prayer." I give you, that's all we, we'll let you away whatever you want.
That's the real reason.
Hey. We, we get social space, and that's what we call it. That's right. Father, we love you, and we thank you so much that you love us. If there's ever been a time when we need to call on you to be in our midst, in our presence, in our hearts, in our community, it's now. And so we ask you to do that, Father, in the, in the what seems like the normal, they run day business of the city up to the, to the stuff that can shake us all our roots. We invite your presence. We invite your wisdom. We invite your peace. And we ask you to join us and be here with us. Be with these men and women. Give them wisdom beyond themselves, guide their hearts and their minds as they lead us to the community. And Father, thank you for the lighthouse that you've already created in Opelika to help us to shine brighter in these times now in Jesus' name.
Amen to you. Father, your word says, "Behold how good it is and pleasant it is for brothers to dwell together in unison." And we come united here today, Father. And Father, we come to you as the God of love, the God of knowledge, and we trust in you with all our heart and lean out on our own understanding. We acknowledge you in all we, in all our ways and all, all of our meetings, though, so that you will direct our paths. Father, we do not rely on ourselves for effective results, for we are only human and often make mistakes. It is you who knows all things. So Father, we are, we, we have your divine way. Have your divine way right now. Have your divine way in this meeting and tonight, and we'll give you the glory. We'll give you the honor and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. You all have previously received a copy of the minutes of the May 19, 2020 council meeting. Is there a motion to accept? So is there a second?
Second.
Any additional divisions or directions?
I would like to carry the remarks on the minute. I just wanted to add a name if they're. The line where he was, and he publicly stated this as well, that recognized the total of six prepaid classes for money for Alabama first. First-class prepaid. And I would just like for the chair I was made to go as a part of the education. Right. Which he mentioned, Axie Jones is saying. I don't want to leave my legacy for that because it's something I had.
Mr. Jones? Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll take care of that for you. Yes, ma'am.
All in favor of accepting with that amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
All right, Mr. President. I have two items, excuse me, that I'd like to discuss with you all tonight. The first is about Opelika Share, and that's a rule that benefits qualified Opelika residents with their power bills. Residents are streaming through the United Way. To qualify, a person must be 55 years or older, or be 100% disabled, and they must be an Opelika Power customer. A person can receive one-time assistance for heating per year, one-time assistance for cooling per year. And cannot receive more than $100 per season. Giving is easy with Opelika Share. There's a box on your power bill, and you can check that. You can, or you can call the Power Services Office at 705-5170. You can give as little as $1 each month, or you can make a one-time donation. Now, we have some folks that are hurting in our community, and we need to make sure we have sufficient funds in Opelika Share so that we can help these elderly or disabled folks with their power bills. So if, if, if council members, and I'm sure most of you are already participating in Share, I hope you are. And if you've given a dollar, maybe you'd like to increase it 100%, give two dollars. So I appreciate and thank you, folks in our area. The second thing I want to mention to you all is compassion. You know, regardless of what someone is experiencing, whether it be celebration, tribulation, or somewhere in between, I try to understand what they're going through and to love them unconditionally. Matthew 22, 36 through 40 in the NIV. Teacher, which is the greatest commandment in the law. Jesus replied, "Love the Lord your God with all your heart and with all your soul and with all your might." This is the first and great commandment. The second is like unto it, "Love your neighbor as yourself." All the law and the prophets hang on these two commandments. Like you, I was shocked, angered, saddened by the tragic and needless death of George Floyd. Every police off, every Opelika police officer that I've spoken with feels as I do. Now's the time for our community, state, and nation to fuse love and tolerance along with kindness and understanding. I want to commend the organizers of the demonstration last Saturday at Courthouse Square and the folks who attended. It was peaceful, and I believe the message was well-received by our community. But as my late mama used to say, "Two wrongs don't make a right." The willful destruction of property and criminal acts in some communities around the nation are not the right way to affect change. Now, I encourage all of us to exercise patience as we communicate with others. Let us think, speak, and act from a consciousness of love. As the Indians used to say, "You don't know a man until you walk a mile in his darkness." So let's fill our heart with compassion and with empathy. And I'll close with this scripture from Colossians 3:12. "As God's chosen ones, holy and beloved, clothe yourselves with compassion, kindness, humility, readiness, and patience." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones? General Business?
Uh, Citizen Communication? We're not in that Citizen Communication, uh, that's correct. You are right.
Mr. Jones?
Citizen Communication? Yeah, now would be the time, if anyone likes to speak to the mayor or the council. What I need you to do is come to the podium, sign in, please, with your name and phone number. If anyone else would like to speak, we have some markers over here, I believe, so if you want to stand along the wall and wait your turn, please, and please keep it to five minutes or less. Thank you. Uh, one other thing, the microphone there, if we can't hear you, could you please either hold it and speak into it or speak kind of loudly, please?
Okay, I have a speech right now, sorry. Okay. Hello, my name is Natalie Simpkins. I'm a current senior at UAV, and I'm majoring in neuroscience and a minor in sociology. I'm also a born and raised in Opelika. I've always been here, always loved the city. But I was, I'm encouraged today to see a diverse set of people willing to make change in this town. I'm also encouraged to see that Opelika's population is 50% white, 50% non-white. Today, I'm also hurt and anguished by the recent events that have occurred in America with the death of Maud Aubrey, George Floyd, and Breonna Taylor. I watched both videos. I watched two men viciously slaughtered, and I watched the descent that happened after. I'm not black. I cannot imagine the pain and fear that the members of my community face daily. I recognize that my privilege has granted me the opportunity to achieve great things, and it also, has also offered me a comfort that many in my community have not seen. And it's a privilege of mine that I stand before you today so I can speak for people who cannot speak for themselves. And as a fellow citizen, I stand here, able to stand the almond water and hold, look like be accountable as we are not immune to the racism that we have seen in this country. And to ensure the protection of its citizens, as well as the brave officers who have been sworn in to protect and serve those citizens, I offer these opinions and suggestions. Firstly, is that my intention that the citizens of Opelika do not know and cannot access the teachings and lessons done in the 11-week training and 13-week academy for law enforcement officers? And I encourage that information to be public so that citizens can be aware and encourage reform if needed. Secondly, I encourage the training of all city employees and students to include both implicit bias testing, which is free on the internet, and cultural competency training, and be aware of those results so that they may be able to self-reflect and diminish those biases in the workplace. Also, first responders should be taught stress management and conflict resolution. As we all know, the duties of law enforcement and first response are constant, constantly demanding, and can involve stressful situations. I also encourage the idea of officer-first training, if it exists in the curriculum, to be mitigated as it creates a destructive power dynamic and can cause unhealthy and problematic situations. Aside from law enforcement, I offer suggestions to the Opelika school system. I'm a graduate of Opelika High, class of 2017. I was class poet and a Kildare scholar, and I have been taught by some of the best teachers in my education, including Ohika Smith, Kendra Allen, and Jenny Johnson, and Bryant Hubley of Opelika Middle School. Throughout my time, I was taught about racism and the bravery of the civil rights movement that had such a profound impact on our community. But I'm not blind to the implicit and explicit racism that occurred to people with minorities almost daily at my education. It is at my request, and now as someone who can vote, I also know the power of the ballot. And it is at my request that, along with the suggestions I've made before, that students 18 and up at Opelika High School have the opportunity to register to vote in-house at Opelika High School the day that they turn 18, and they have valid ID. It is also my request that local laws, including criminalization, Miranda rights, and rights placed on citizens, is taught at the highest capacity in our government classes. And my last request involves very active participation. I propose that law enforcement begin meaningful conversations with minority community leaders, such as pastors, people of color, business owners, and other prominent figures, more so than just city council meetings. This is a great opportunity to promote better relations for most people who just want to be heard. Again, I suggest these things not solely for the protection of the citizens, but for the protection of the officers who have sworn to protect those citizens. None of these things that I've requested today are political. They do not have a partisan behind. They have solely come, come out of my concern of America and what I don't want Opelika to become. I don't want Opelika burned to the ground. I want Opelika to be a beacon of light in the South, where we have had the most racial prejudices of all time for, for a while now. I want us to be a beacon, and I want us to do something, be the change that we want to see. And I want to leave with this, that patriotism is not just a love for our country and our community. It is the ability to seek out injustice and squander it, to make better without judgment of the past, and to make, and to want more from our government, because we believe in it, we believe in our values, and we deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well. I just want to start out with a local issue and then sort of flow in and recapture a little bit of what she said.
I'm sorry. Would you give us your name and address?
Oh, my. Uh, my name is William Ho-Ho, and my address is 2016 Old Lefet Highway. Here in Opelika, just past Opelika High School. I have talked to the engineering department, tried to get a little planning, planning department to find out who's in charge of the care along the embankment of Lefet Parkway going north, just past Opelika High School. It's overgrown with trees, shrubs. It's, it's an eyesore. I contacted the Department of Transportation about six or seven years ago when they were located on 280. Mayor's office gave me their phone number, because I contacted the mayor, and I made one phone call, and they came down and took care of it. They had plowed off. They took about three or four truckloads of debris out. Since then, the Department of Transportation has changed hands, and there has been no care outside of that area. I've talked to the Rebecca campaign board, and the infield supervisor that actually goes out. And this reached us about two or three weeks ago. I tried to, this was going on for a month, but I finally got him to come down and look at the area. And I was told directly and bluntly that they weren't going to deal with the issue. It has overgrown trees there. It's root bound. The supervisor said that even if his people were taking care of it, he would stop them immediately. He tried to put it off on the city and onto the railroad, but I found out from the engineering department that that is in fact supposed to be cared for by the Department of Transportation. I contacted the Lieutenant Governor about a month ago, sending photos. And that's all I got to offer to you, if you'd like to see it, is the photos of this area, because I got no paperwork. I requested from the engineering department if they had something I could, I could show you. Email me. They did do it. But the city's taking care of their area, plant area between Old Lefet, and there's a run, a roundabout there for buses. I guess my neighbors, I've been there 22 years, and this was before I moved in. My neighbors had had, I asked that the kids be dropped off in the school buses there, so they created a little turnaround there, and there's a sign there that says, "No parking." But you can't see that sign. For one thing, it's, it's aged, and the lettering don't stand out. And the other thing is overgrown, overgrown again. It's very bitter, so you can't see it. I've had semi-drivers park the trucks there and leave them there for weeks at a time. There was one incident where a Greyhound bus got misguided, I guess, when they came down. It's a dead-end road. There's, at the end, there's the trailer, trail. I lived in one of the houses before that. But there was no way for that semi, for that Greyhound to back, turn around. And I, I had to go out and help driver back up several hundred feet to turn around on, on, pretty mad. So he would go back out. So something needs to be done about that. I don't pre-achieve read, because this is the second time I've had a, approached a Department of Transportation about the same issue. They cleaned it up real good. They even trimmed up overgrown trees before. They left some debris there and cleaned out a lot of it. It's all overgrown again, and they don't want to deal with it because of the steepness of the embankment. I suggested that they keep up the care of it, so grass can be put in there or rocks. But even if, even if that's the issue, you still could have tree growth. And it's really, it's right out in front of my house. I got to look at it every day, and I don't need to. I was trying to clean up that neighborhood. There's new development going in. It's going to raise the price of the housing for resale. There's all good people there. Never had a problem. But I'd like to see it cleaned up, not only as a resident, but the state pays these departments a lot of money to take into consideration how much they have to deal with. And they're, they're, they're collecting these funds, and they're not putting manpower to it. So as far as I'm concerned, that's just, that's fraud on their part. They're getting money, and it's going into their pocket. So that's one issue. But the other issue is, I'm a legitimate presidential candidate. Not traditional.
Can you, can you tell us? I'm sorry.
And I just want to show you that this is not a joke. This is from Florida, and essentially, I'm a real citizen. I do not have access to the public through media, and it makes it difficult to establish my platform.
Sorry, we'll, we'll, I'm going to ask the mayor and Mr. Mollie to look into the grass in weed states. We'll, we'll be happy to do that.
I'll be glad to show you the photos of it. If you don't have any, but you're down to look at it, like, just give me a call.
Good evening, Mayor Fuller, members of the council. Uh, my name is Isaac Standridge, and I live on Elliott Avenue, and I work for it. I also want to note that this week is my one-year anniversary of being a resident of Opelika. And I'm really happy to be here, because this year I also got married in Opelika, and I became a homeowner in Opelika. I'm very thankful to be here for those reasons. Um, I decided to come speak today because of what has I decided to come speak today because of what has transpired throughout our country this past week as a result of what medical examiners are now describing as a homicide at the hands of Minneapolis police against George Floyd. My priority in coming tonight is to work to ensure that nothing like that happens here in Opelika. As a result, I would like to discuss the role of policing in our community and what our city's budget can tell us. I want to start by saying that I believe that budgets are a reflection of our values and goals. After reviewing our city's budget, I was surprised to see that our largest expenditure is public safety coming in at around twenty-nine percent. It has actually doubled the next largest expenditure. In regards to the role of policing, Brooklyn College sociology professor, Dr. Alex Rattali, researches some of the trends we have seen in this country around policing. And one of those trends that's arise is that we're beginning to see police as a way to address every social problem. Instead of directly addressing social problems head-on, we now rely on police to do that. So as a result, police are now asked to manage social problems such as poverty, homelessness, mental health issues, and schools that could benefit from additional professional resources, and much more. As we examine our community budget, that seems to bear some truths. As I mentioned previously, public safety makes up around twenty-nine percent of the budget, whereas education and health and wellness make up about five percent and one percent respectively. As part of the national dialogue, here are a couple creative ideas that have stand out to me that may help us think about alternatives to policing. One, in regards to domestic violence, what if there were resources for individuals experiencing abuse at the hands of their partners that would allow them to meet a professional in a safe place to discuss their options? Or if a neighborhood, or if a neighbor is having a mental health crisis, what if there were mental health professionals that could do wellness checks on them, rather than asking the police to do that? As a trained educator, I know when I began my career as a first-grade teacher, I would have loved for my students to have more access to counselors, social workers, and after-school enrichment activities. In essence, public schools based on community schools models. I'm sure everyone in here could think of an alternative way to manage social problems without the use of law enforcement agents, potentially putting themselves and others at risk. As a credit to this council, I wouldn't like to note that I think it's wonderful that we invest so much in our culture and recreation funds. My wife and I have enjoyed pottery classes at the community center immensely. In closing, I would like to remind you that my hope is that we can continue to have these conversations around the role of policing in the community, and work towards a budget that reflects our values by investing in public safety funds for education and mental health, increasing those, and decreasing public safety funds by asking our police to no longer manage all of our social problems, but have public funds that are used to reduce those social problems through other appropriate means. Thanks again for the opportunity to address you, and I look forward to any opportunities I have and more. Thank you.
If you all have some written remarks you'd like to link in with us, we'll try to get our minutes correct.
Good evening, Councilman. Clay Walter, twelve sixteen Brookwood Circle, Opelika. I'm here today representing Elgro's, the community garden, and the farmer's market. And just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow is Opelika Given Day. It's our second annual given day. We've got twelve local organizations that's part of it. The Community Foundation of East Alabama is helping coordinate to get the money out. I would hate to try to name all twelve of us, because I'm sure I would miss somebody. Y'all please visit opelikagivenday.com, or you can find them on Facebook. And choose your favorite charity or few charities to join, while let me say it right here in our community.
Thank you, Clay. I thank the council. Pass the resolution in our last meeting to make a donation from our discretionary fund to Opelika Giving. We're already on record.
Good evening, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I feel this privilege that we all can come back together. Last time I was here, we didn't know whether we would come back together in three months, six months, or just how long it would be, because we might be doing some string line. Apparently, we have had to do that in other places, but it's good to be able to see everybody back out here.
Mr. Jackson, would you state your name and address?
My name is Lindbergh Bernard Jackson. I'm here on behalf of a property that we were trying to resolve an issue concerning safe, sound, and sanitary conditions at eleven thirteen Lake Street. And primarily, my reasoning is to let you guys know that due to the pandemic, times that we're going through, that it has delayed us. But we have made contact with the person or the persons that have paid the previous taxes. We have been in touch with our attorneys. But due to, like I said, the pandemic, we have not been able to get into the courthouse and make the necessary corrections and terms of taxes and other things. But we do now have a word back from them, and we plan to move forward. It's a little difficult right now with us being able to get all of the subcontractors and people in place to go out and actually do the work. But I assure Mr. Governor that our attorney, Mr. Cody Foot, has prepared most of the documents. And we do plan to move forward. Mrs. Humphrey's here tonight. She hasn't changed her mind. She has a tenant that's willing to put in some sweat equity along with us to go ahead and bring this property up standard. But I would like to make one comment. And this is in light of what we have going on in our country today. Mrs. Humphrey initially contacted our building, your building and your coat office here. And I explained to you all that Mrs. Fundler Lloyd has a serious back condition along with several other conditions, and has suffered this condition for over a period, probably the last six or eight years. And due to that, she hasn't been able to put any money in it. I've tried to maintain the property and just recently found that there's something to purchase the property. But Mrs. Humphrey contacted the building office of the city of Opelika, and she contacted Mr. David Chapman. And in light of Mr. Chapman saying to Mrs. Humphrey that we will work with you, or have been trying to work with Mr. Jackson, Mr. Chapman made the statement that I've been working for several years, and I don't call the number of years, and she can verify this, to get this property taken down, rather than help. If we work together to help resolve our problems in terms of differences, and whether it be racial differences, whether it be our housing differences or what have you, but if we work with the people in the city that is trying to help the welfare and the betterment of the city, it works out a lot better than having people get all frustrated and come from the outside and bring trouble to our city. And I think a lot of you guys know what I mean, whether you're policing housing or whether you're policing people. It stands to reason that we can work our problems out together better than we can work against each other to seek what we can do to tear each other down. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Governor, on this issue, we had some dates and deadlines and agreements that we did talk about pre-pandemic or right as the pandemic was starting. Would you look back into those and see what we need to do about any amendments that may be necessary?
Well, this is the case for the council that ordered the demolition of the property, if you recall. And the deadline is, there's a hundred and eighty days for the city to take it down after the mayor, after its council directs it to be taken down. So that's the, it seems to me that's sometime late June or early July. Do you remember the date, Mr. Jackson?
October and July, but we were given at that time that we discussed this at our last meeting, you informed the council that if something, action hadn't been taken by a certain date and time, that that hundred and eighty days would have to start over. And I think that the country, along with the rest of the world, has had to stop and take notice and give due diligence to the buyers. So I think it would be quite unfair to ask us to do things in the midst of what's going on right now up on that same timeline. So what I'm here to make sure of is that you guys are informed and know that we're working to work through that, and we are, we have completed most of the things that you asked us to do. And it's just shy of getting a permit and going to work. And we haven't been able to get into the courthouse to do the necessary legal things that we needed to do to catch up on taxes, to also be able to pull permits and pull people out there to move forward. So like I said, even though there was a timeline, there was a timeline on a lot of things that were supposed to be happening in the country, in the world. Everything had to stop and give some precedence to what was going on in terms of the virus. And I'm not gonna put myself in harm's way and would ask the city official or anybody to do likewise. So I think in all due respect, that we deserve that timeline to be pushed back and to move forward from this point on. And we have no intentions of stopping. We have every intention of moving forward. The city has a very bad problem with housing, low-income housing in particular. And if I must say this, about two-thirds of the housing that has been taken down has been taken down in the neighborhood of low-to-moderate income folks, which would mean that they would probably be ninety percent, almost, if I'm fine correct, of those coming out of the black community. And that's where we need the housing the most. That's where we have less investment from the developers putting the money in. And Mrs. Humphrey has proven by buying another property off Monroe that was under the demolition timeframe and moving forward on it, and she's just about ready to rent that property. So it's hard enough trying to find people to invest in our neighborhood, rather than having the city mark and pick on property owners that have problems. The low-to-moderate income neighborhood has a problem. And the problem is not the city, it's investors moving into the neighborhood and people being able to afford housing. So affordable housing is one of the top issues, not only in Opelika, but in every African-American community that is. So we're moving forward to try to help remedy the problem. And so we need your guys, you guys, help, rather than punching us out on the clock.
Mr. President, may I ask a question? Have we sent something to them saying that the time that it's expired or not given them? Well, I would say that we give them that time that they weren't able to work, increase that number.
Well, I wonder what is going to, have you got talk back to Mr. Chapman?
Well, unfortunately, we have not been able to talk to a lot of people.
Yeah.
And so that's why, I mean, our attorney, we turned it over to him, and he has just recently contacted the corporation. So we can do that moving forward after tonight.
How about you get with Mr. Motley tonight before you leave? Mr. Motley, if you'll raise your hand, get with him before you leave tonight, and let's get something so that we can take some action.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Motley.
Others?
Okay, well, thank you. General business, Mr. Jones. First item under general business is a request from the Collin Wood neighborhood for their twenty-twenty Christmas luminaries on Friday, December eighteenth.
Is there a motion for approval?
Some in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
There are.
Have a night caller, please.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith to you?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon to you?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted out.
Bid, Mr. Motley?
The first bid is asking the council to approve a contract with paving, excavation, and utility daylighting services. The bid date was May the eighteenth. It's Opelika Power Services. The bid was mailed to four vendors. Four bids were received. This is a budgeted contract. Bid tabulation sheets are attached. We recommend that the contract be awarded to associated mechanical contractors on their low bid meeting specifications on an as-needed basis.
Is there a motion for approval?
No approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night caller, please.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith to you?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted out.
The next item is asking the council to approve a contract for substation U Bushings. Again, the bid opening date was May the eighteenth. It's Opelika Power Services. The bid was mailed to four vendors. Three bids received. This is a budgeted contract, and the bid tabulation sheets are attached. We recommend the contract be awarded to Stewart C. Erby Company on their next lowest bid meeting specifications in the amount of eight-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-four dollars. Again, this was not the low bid. This is the only one that met the specifications, because we use this particular title with our other equipment in the substations. The other titles do not work.
Is there a motion for approval?
Some in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night caller, please.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith to you?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted out.
Resolution, Mr. Governor?
Mr. President, the first resolution authorizes the mayor to dispose of certain cell phones and accessories as unneeded personal property of the city.
Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night caller, please.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith to you?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted out.
Second resolution authorizes a refund of building permit fees to Maurice Ward in the amount of nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars pertaining to the property located at two oh seven Avenue Eight. This is the former Ward's funeral home that was demolished.
Is there a motion for approval?
No approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night caller, please.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith to you?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted out.
The resolution number three approves a contract with East Alabama Paving Company for resurfacing and roadway improvements. Budgeted up to eight-hundred-thousand dollars for these improvements this year. And the resolution approved the bid and the schedule of unit prices that were submitted by East Alabama Paving Company.
Is there a motion for approval?
Some in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
I don't think we can start.
Good afternoon. My name's Lynn Kiss, Assistant City Engineer. The contractor is right now planning on the paving, looking at two months out before we start the paving. We've got some of the follow-up. This next resolution is gonna be some roadway improvement. We're gonna have some, we've got to get the curve, we've got to be stuck in my eye on those projects before the paving.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Lynn.
I know I submitted a couple streets, I know, you have followed out. I guess they would be on, you have a list?
Yes, I do. Right now, we've got a list of 13. I think we've got Manche. I don't have it pulled this year right now.
You, I know, Heaven Street, we're going to get.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Have a non-call roll, please. Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Fourth resolution approves a bid and reward contract to Robinson Paving Company for general roadway improvements such as the curving that we referred to earlier. This bid is awarded on a schedule of unit prices submitted by Robinson Paving Company.
Is there a motion for approval?
Some of it.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please. Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
On September 4, 2019, the city council approved a project agreement with 280 Land Company with respect to Hidden Lake Subdivision South, which is located on the south side of Sportsplex Road. In that agreement, the developer agreed to complete the public infrastructure, which would be the streets and public utilities for phases one and two of this development no later than December 31. As the council knows, there have been considerable weather delays. We had a considerable amount of rain in the winter and in the spring. And then we've also had a COVID-19 emergency come up since that time. So you have for you a resolution that would extend the completion date for the infrastructure in phases one and two to August 31, 2020.
Is there a motion for approval?
Some of it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please. Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
The sixth resolution approves and accepts the dedication of a right-of-way for Lowell's Drive, which connects Frederick Road to Parker Way. And you have a copy of the aerial photograph that depicts the actual location of this proposed public water.
Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second? Is there discussion? Have a non-call roll, please. Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
We have an award. This is for this evening. The character trait for the month of June is cooperation. Defined as the act of or instance of working or acting together. Certainly, we're in a time that calls for a lot of character trait of cooperation right now. Any other questions for the council to see?
I have two things. I just want to nominate Harvey Duggal to one of the vacant downtown redevelopment board spots.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said I wanted to make a nomination for Harvey Duggal, we call him Doug, to be considered for one of the vacant spots at the downtown redevelopment board. What was that board? He's a former teacher firefighter. He really wants to volunteer. I've already, or he's already submitted a volunteer form. And finally, I just wanted to thank Mayor Fuller and City Administrator Joy Wiley and Mike Hillier for the riot room last week. I know there was some issues with the cutting. And everything worked out really well. It looks really good in my area. I think some of the areas that were overgrown belong to individuals or businesses. But he's been working with the compliance office to make sure that letters are going out and that people are actually taking care of their property. So it looks really nice over there right now. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. And we'll take up the nominations on those, for that slot. We'll get that on the agenda for a little bit. Others? Is there a motion for adjournment?
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a call roll, please. Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.